Morning, everybody. Welcome to our Tuesday, March 21 meeting of the Mason County Board of Commissioners. We will begin with our Pledge of Allegiance. And if Jeff Conklin, if you would mind leading us today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jeff. The clerk, would please take the roll?
Commissioner, District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner, District Two, Kevin Schutie.
Here.
Commissioner, District Three, Terry Jeffries.
Here.
Okay. That takes us to item number four, Correspondence and Organizational Business. If the clerk would please report the correspondence.
Don Pagreba sent an application in for the Transportation Improvement Program Citizen Advisory Panel Board. The Liquor and Cannabis Board sent liquor licenses for the hub center at 111 Northeast Old Belafair Highway and also Little Creek Casino and Resort Event Center, 91 West State Route 108. The State of Washington Department of Commerce sent a letter requesting designation of an associate development organization. And just this morning, we received an email from Ken Van Buskirk regarding the memorandum of understanding between the North Mason School District and Mason County for the North Mason Football Field renovation project.
Okay, thank you. Item number five, open forum for citizen input. This is an opportunity for members of the public to come forward and speak to issues that aren't listed on today's agenda. If anybody's interested in speaking on issues that are not on today's agenda, now's the time to please come forward. Steve?
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. Another beautiful day in our wonderful county, isn't it? I wanted to just bring forward a bit of what I think is good news, and it may be a pain for you later on, I don't know, we'll find out, but our company is, and the shellfish industry as a whole, is succeeding very rapidly. We're doing rapid expansion. And we have an opportunity right now and a very large need for a pretty good-sized expansion. And we'd like to place it on Harstein Island, which will mean maybe a rezone of some property out there. And what our needs is, a new hatchery. And it would be a rather large building, maybe 12,000 square feet or something, to accommodate what we need. And it's a rural residential now, so we'll have to go down that road of getting a rezone for that large of a building. And I just wanted you guys aware of that. We're going to be talking with the different agencies we need to talk with within the county to get the ball rolling on that. But hopefully by this time next year, we're really breaking ground and getting an opportunity to further expand the shellfish industry in Mason County. So with that, we'll work with you.
Steve, how many of those agriculture buildings did you end up building? How's that?
Well, five. Actually, seven total. Two small buildings for wet storage and whatnot. When we get the other five completed, I'll sit down and bring, I would love to have all three of you come out and visit our site and look at what we're doing, because it's very interesting. It's a very interesting process of growing algae and little baby oysters and then the storage facility and a sorting machine that can count four oysters a second within two millimeters in size and depth. It's quite a technology. And we'll get you out to take a look at it if you want and see what direction and actually the science behind what it is. And it is science.
Steve had told us before that our change in our regulations that allowed him to build those buildings. He told us when he was building them that it was going to turn into a bigger investment later.
And that's what this is. We haven't even turned wheel one with the first part, and we're already, I like to prove, I like to see something come out the door before I go jumping into a two- or three-million-dollar expansion. Jim says, "No, we're going to do it, you're going to make it." So we'll make it work. Hopefully, I can retire somewhere along that time. But we'll make it work. What that means to us is probably a doubling of our company.
Wow.
Congratulations.
But it also allows maybe a doubling of availability of seed for the other smaller companies that are having, struggling right now getting seed. And that is an important aspect, so the little guy doesn't get shut out. We have a consolidation of all businesses within the country, as bigger groups swallow smaller ones. I like small business. I love small business. I love mom-and-pop operations. This allows mom-and-pop operations to exist, this type of project. So we want to see them succeed. If we can succeed, if they can succeed, then our tax base stabilizes for the county, we start going the right way with the employment. Everything works. Everything works. Got to start with small business.
Steve, congratulations to Seattle Shellfish. This is exciting news. Thank you for the tour that you gave me out at the Harstein facility, probably two years now.
You know, any time.
You were starting the line growing of the oysters. How did that go?
Well, right now, my son is in Boston at a trade show. We went from zero sales in oysters basically a year ago to about 800,000 in sales this year.
Congratulations.
And we're looking at maybe as much as eight million in sales by the end of this year.
So they're domestic sales, then?
Almost all domestic sales.
Congratulations.
Yeah. We intend to sell out of the country as well, mainly to China, because that goes hand-in-hand with our gooey deck stuff. But as of yet, it's been almost entirely domestic sales. And that's good.
It is.
It is good. We got to feed ourselves first. If we can't feed our nation, we're a third-world country. We have to have the flexibility to promote our industry, our agriculture, to produce enough food for us. It's just one small thing.
Plus, it's that step that takes Mason County's reputation as the oyster capital of the world a little bit further inland.
Well, I would love to promote that idea. And worldwide, I think that we're about a blip about this big on the radar compared to China. But it's not a bad idea.
Great, thank you.
Great, thanks, Steve. I appreciate the update and keep it posted.
Thank you. And I'll be talking with you over time here, if it's okay with you, to clarify where we're going and what direction and intent and all that as time goes by.
Great. Thanks, Steve. Any other comments from the public? Okay. Item number six, adoption of our agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move to amend the agenda, first of all, to add an item 8.11, approval to sign a letter to Governor Inslee regarding policies that implement health care integration.
With a second?
One. So you're adding it to the consent agenda or the action agenda?
The action agenda, yes.
Okay. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we add an item 8.11, the approval to sign a letter to Governor Inslee regarding policies that implement health care integration. Any other discussion?
Just for the public's knowledge, this lever, basically, we've, the Behavioral Health Organization for Thurston, Mason County, been in discussions with the Washington State Health Care Authority about what is the role of behavioral health organizations in the full integration of primary care and behavioral health care. And the answers we got from health care authority, we feel, are not satisfactory, and they truly don't really follow the intent and the spirit of the law that was passed in 2013. And so we're asking the governor to take a look at how that integration should look and what is the role of county government, specifically in behavioral health organizations, more in a larger perspective.
Mr. Chairman, have we been able to pass this out?
I don't believe it's.
Then you can use my extra copy if there's somebody that really would like to read it. Other than that, I can pass it to the press. There are none, will you pass it over?
Sure. And this is really part of a, I think, an important conversation that we need to have with our state leaders on this. This is part of a, there was early, mid, and then there'll be late adopters to this program. And I think there have been a lot of concerns raised by the early adopters, which tends to be a red flag to people that may be a mid-adopter, that some of these things need to be looked at and tweaked. And maybe, you know, we don't want to give up, you know, control locally if we don't have to. And if we do have to, that we want to make sure that we will have a good discussion about it and have a fair say in it. So I appreciate you bringing this forward. And we, with that, I will call for the vote on adding this to the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay. Item 8.11 is added to our action agenda today.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the revised agenda.
There, second?
Yep, second.
We moved and seconded that we adopt the revised agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, and the agenda is revised.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the minutes, February 27, 2017, briefing minutes, March 7, 2017, and March 14, 2017, regular meeting minutes as written.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve minutes from February 27, March 7, and March 14. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? The minutes are approved. Action, item number eight on our agenda is our action agenda today. We will read through the items on the agenda, and at that point, we will entertain questions and comments from both the commission and the public. At that time, a commissioner or a citizen can remove an item from our agenda for a separate vote and discussion. Commissioner Netherland, if you would take items 8.1 through 8.3. Commissioner Jeffries, 8.4 through 8.6. And I will take 8.7 through 8. Well, let's have you do, Commissioner Jeffries, let's have you do 2, 6, and then I will take the rest.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chairman, item number 8.1, approval to amend resolution 05-17 to revise the non-represented salary scale range alignment by approving the request to rename the Public Defense Administrator to Chief Public Defender. Item number 8.2, approval of warrants, claims clearing funds, warrants number 804628 through 8047225 for the amount of $1,209,325.14. Direct deposit fund warrants number 390623 through 39445 for the amount of $608,087.87. Salary clearing fund warrants number 7002608 through 7002648 for the amount of $896,4920 for a total of $2,713,462.21. Item number 8.3, approval to reappoint Monte Ritter and appoint Jesse Sims and Tina Post to the Mason County Parks and Trails Advisory Board for four-year terms ending December 31, 2020.
Item 8.4, approval to set a public hearing on April 11, 2017, at 9:30 a.m. to consider the sale of real property located at 150 East Panorama Drive, Shelton, parcel number Item 8.5, approval of general terms and conditions between the State of Washington Department of Social and Health Services and Mason County. These general terms and conditions would supersede and replace any previously executed terms and conditions. 8.6, approval of the January 27 through December 2019 collective bargaining agreement for American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, Local Number 1504, representing Mason County Auditor, Assessor, Treasurer, District Court, County Clerk, and Department of Emergency Management Departments.
Item 8.7, approval to authorize the Public Works Director to sign and submit a funding application to USDA for a water service meter project for Russellwood and Beards Cove Water System. 8.8, approval of Veterans Assistance Fund applications for necessity items, $300, and utilities, $570.04, for a total of $870.04, as recommended by the Veteran Service Office. Item 8.9, approval of the resolution to support the official naming of Smith Island at Island Lake. Item 8.10, approval of the memorandum of understanding between North Mason School District and Mason County for the North Mason Soccer Football Field renovation project. And item 8.11, approval to sign a letter to Governor Inslee regarding policies that implement health care integration. Okay, any questions or comments on any of the items?
Mr. Chair, I think that item 8.9 warrants some discussion from the proponents. I assume that's why you're here, Mr. and Mrs., and so I would like to pull that out for a separate vote.
Okay.
Just to hear a comment and how we got here.
Okay. Okay, so we will remove item 8.9 for a separate discussion at this time, if you would like to make comment.
My name's Steve Whitehouse, and thank you for allowing us to be here today, and particularly to you, Mr. Schutie, Commissioner Schutie, for helping us with this. I'm here on behalf of the Island Lake Foundation, the board of which is myself, Jeff Conklin who's here today, Jim Sawyer, and Max Holson. A number of years ago, we started on a process to consider rehabilitating the island at Island Lake because it was being destroyed by wave action. And we convinced Bill Smith to transfer the island to us, and he did so in 2011. And after that, we began discussions. It was a long, arduous process. As you know, the permitting process is not easy sometimes, and we had to develop a habitat management plan, work with the State of Washington, the Army Corps of Engineers, and with Mason It has resulted in the rehabilitation of the island, and I'd like to show you a few things today. Part of our objective here, we have two objectives, really, in being here. Number one, to give community recognition to the people who helped us, because we got a significant amount of support, and the resolution indicates the people who participated. But we got support from people who had used to live at the island 20 years ago and sent us checks for several hundred dollars. While we were working on it, we would have people at the boat launch with binoculars who hadn't been there in years but heard about it and were there watching us do the work. We had people going by in boats and canoes. It was a great process. The other thing we're trying to achieve is to get the island named Smith Island. Bill Smith, that was the only thing he asked of us. You can't do that until a person has been deceased for five years, and we have passed that point. And in doing that, recognizing that the Mason County Commission doesn't have the legal authority to name something, it is a representation, a representative to the community. And we can take this resolution, we can go to the Washington State Committee on Geographic Names, which then reviews it, and then goes to the Washington State Board on Geographic Names, which then, once you get there, you go to the United States Board on Geographic Names for the federal government. So it's going to be a little bit of a process going through here. If I could, just to show you how successful this has been, if I could, hand something up. Sorry. I put a copy of the resolution on top.
Thank you.
Below that is a photograph that was taken about the time that Island Lake was platted in 1931. And you can barely see the island there, but from what you can see, you can see that it's pretty well vegetated. The photograph below that was taken in the 1960s, and you can see how well-vegetated the island is at that point in time. The next photograph is the island a year ago, and you can see how it's been decimated. Following that, these are the plans that were developed by Dan Ireland of SCJ Alliance. He donated his time for this. When we first saw these drawings, we just went, "This is fantastic." And through this process, we communicated with Grace Miller at Mason County, with Gloria Rogers of the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and they helped advocate for us in this project. They were tremendous. And if I can show you one other thing, if I can get this pulled up here, and I'll try not to be too long with this. I realize this isn't very big.
I laugh about this picture. Whose photos did you have to go through to find that one?
That's Christie Buck.
Is it Christie?
This is the island as it exists now. Well, as it existed at the beginning of the summer. You can see all the woody debris that's been placed, the gravel. It's, and this is on the airport side of the island, which was the most decimated because that's where we might just come across. There were logs placed around, but on this side, we just put what's called COIR log, C-O-I-R. They're made out of coconut fiber.
Will you replant the island, too?
We've already started.
Guy hundred new plants are on.
You see all this gravel area?
Yes.
There's what you call woody wood stakes in there. They will eventually root, most of them will willows. And so right now, the entire area that you're seeing rehabilitated has submerged. In fact, Jeff and I were up there on Sunday, and it seems to be holding up pretty well. We might have a little bit more work, but you can see how much work has been done.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
Anyways, thank you all for your support.
Very good. Well, it seems like the only thing harder than rebuilding an island is renaming one. So I'm not sure if the hard part is over or yet to come. But I know that in my conversations with you and Jeff and some of the other folks out at Island Lake, this is a tremendous project, and it's a clear labor of love for not only your Island Lake community but for Mason County as a whole. And so when you brought this forward to me, I was more than happy to help get it on today's agenda and to have you come and speak to a project that you've put a lot of your own time and resources into, and really that a lot of people have come together to put a lot of time and resources into, from, you know, both just members of the community and businesses and, you know, and so this is our contribution, and we wish you all the best in terms of getting this named Smith Island officially. So good luck, and thank you for bringing it forward, and please keep us posted on the next steps.
So with that, Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the resolution supporting the official naming of Smith Island at Island Lake.
I thought we're doing the action agenda, that we still on the action agenda, we didn't take it off. Do we? We still have the action agenda to do.
Right, so you wanted it removed for a separate vote, or do you?
I did.
Can we?
I requested that.
Okay, so let's, we'll vote on this first, and then we'll go back to the action agenda. So Commissioner, if you could just restate your motion.
Mr. Chair, following the, I would remove my motion at the time, and we'll restate it after the approval of the action agenda.
Okay, so we will entertain a motion then to approve items 8.1 through 8.11, with the exception of item 8.9 on today's action agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the action agenda, items 8.1 through 8.11, with removal of 8.9 to be taken for a separate vote.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve today's action agenda, items 8.1 through 8.11, with the exception of item 8.9. Any further discussion?
Couple of comments, Mr. Chairman. One, thank you very much to our staff again, another union contract. I appreciate that our unions understand our financial situation and that we have the communication that's necessary for both sides to come out of this okay without devastating us. It's been wonderful having these relationships. I also want to give a very special thank you and to those that have stepped up to serve on our county trails, parks and trails. It is nice to see some of these names. Some of you may remember Jesse Sims, Monte Ritter's been there for a long time, and Tina Post is another one that's new to it, but she's going to be very, very active, I can tell, and very much appreciate her. But also, we have in the room a representative for the North Mason School District, and I'm ecstatic that we're getting this memorandum of understanding between us done so we can move forward with getting that funded, funding for the Philpew Stadium up there. It's wonderful.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? And motion carries. So that leaves us with item 8.9, the approval of the resolution to support the official naming of Smith Island at Island Lake. I would entertain a motion.
So moved?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution to support the official naming of Smith Island at Island Lake. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you very much for your work. Congratulations. Look forward to seeing, in the coming years, a fully vegetated and beautiful island.
Thanks, Chairman. Well done, guys.
Hearing no other comment, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? And motion carries. Item nine on our agenda today is other business, which is an opportunity for department heads and elected officials to address the commission. Are there any department heads or elected officials that would like to do so?
About the one down in the front.
Okay. Item, there are no public hearings today, so we'll move to item 11, which is our board reports and calendar, and I'll go ahead and get started. So last week, I just, actually, I want to take a moment to comment on a community event that happened last week since we, in the time since we've met. As everybody here has probably read or heard or spoken to somebody, we all know of the events that happened at last week's Pioneer Kiwanis meeting at Spencer Lake Bar and Grill. A very difficult and, I think, sad situation for those folks there, and it's a situation that could have been much worse had it not been for the brave and selfless actions of Larry, the owner of Spencer Lake Bar and Grill there, and members of the Kiwanis Club intervening as they subdued the suspect, waiting for first responders, law enforcement to get there. And so I was actually, I was scheduled to speak at the Pioneer Kiwanis Club tomorrow. As you can imagine, they are going to be working through some of the issues as a result of last week's incident, and so I will not be speaking there tomorrow, but we'll get that rescheduled. I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank everybody there for just their courageous acts. Really, it's a testament to what makes Mason County a truly wonderful community, and I appreciate them stepping up to that challenge and as well as our first responders getting there and making sure that a bad situation didn't become much, much worse. Last week, I also attended the transportation briefing with our, at the Chamber, Shelton Mason Chamber. It was great. We had presentations from the state, local, the city of Shelton folks, and then our county transportation folks, as well as an update from our local railroad. So great. I think the Chamber actually posted the slide, the PowerPoint presentation on Facebook, so I encourage you guys to take a look at that, and just some interesting data and projects on the way. Good updates on projects up in the north end and some stuff being worked on down here in our neck of the woods. Also, I spent the morning last Friday with our county coroner, Wes Stockwell. I was able to observe autopsies in Kitsap County. And let me tell you, it's a, very, very impressed with the way our coroner and his staff handle their job. It's a difficult job. They're contacting people that are often in a, it's the worst day for families, it's one of the worst days that you can imagine, and they handle their job with such compassion and professionalism. And then, one of the things that I wanted to note from that was the great relationship we've built with Kitsap County and their coroner, Greg Sandstrom. We share their facility at a major cost savings to Mason County, and so I just really appreciate it, being able to see their facility, appreciate that partnership, and I think it will be a mutually beneficial one for us and them for years to come. Today, after our commission meeting, we'll be meeting with members of the Squaxon Tribe to discuss the Hurst water ruling that is being discussed right now in the legislature. After that, we'll have a presentation from the Mason County Sheriff's Office on their crime statistics, which are trending in a positive direction for us here, so it'll be good to get an update and hear a little bit about what they attribute that to. Then we have our Mason Transit Authority meeting tomorrow. We'll be meeting with folks from the Navy to talk about a Sentinel landscape designation for land in Mason, Jefferson, and Kitsap Counties that... Tomorrow, we'll be meeting with folks from the Navy to talk about a Sentinel Landscape designation for land in Mason, Jefferson, and Kitsap Counties that are, that encompass some of their naval installations in those areas. I will be meeting then on Commissioner Jeffries' behalf with the Agency on Aging. I'll be taking that meeting for her on Thursday. I'll also be meeting with members of BIAW, that's the Building Industry Association of Washington. I was appointed last week by Governor Inslee to serve on the State Building Code Council, so I'll be meeting with those folks in Olympia on Thursday. And then members of Olympia Master Builders on Thursday evening. Friday, we have a special meeting of the Hood Canal Coordinating Council to discuss the Sentinel Landscape designation that we'll be talking about tomorrow with the Navy. Monday, I will be speaking with the North Mason Community Voice up in Belfair. Be the first speaker in their new location at the Hub, which is fantastic, great, great space there. And then Tuesday, before our evening meeting, our primetime meeting, as I like to call it, we have a Board of Health meeting. Commissioner Jeffries.
Thank you, Commissioner Schutte, and thank you for those words acknowledging the work of the Pioneer Kiwanis as well as Mr. Lawrence in that tragic situation last week. We had briefings following last week's meeting. On Wednesday, the 15th, we had a meeting of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And the meeting prior to that, the Economic Development Council came in and shared findings from some community and industry roundtable discussions about tourism and tourism development in Mason County. And one of the recommendations that came out of the industry roundtable was that there be the creation of something called a designated destination marketing organization. Frequently, those, that's the moniker for a visitor convention bureau, although it isn't always the way it has to be. And so we are also in the position now to start thinking about contracting for services of tourism promotion for 2018 and 19 and beyond. Our contracts run out at the end of this year. So brought to the table was the discussion of do we want to facilitate the creation of a destination marketing organization? And we will, we called another special meeting on April 13 to bring back some due diligence. I'm very thankful that members of the committee are, have identified visitor convention bureaus to go find their best practices. How are they funded? What are their activities? What are their goals and plans? And so if one were to be contracted by Mason County's lodging tax monies, what are some of the things we would want to put in request or proposal? So we'll be moving forward with that, and then also, we agreed on and will be working on the language for visitor information services. And we are expanding the type of visitor information services that could be proposed to include virtual type of visitor information services, maybe apps, computer apps or phone apps. And even kiosks, et cetera, as well as the traditional brick and mortar. So we'll be interested to see what type of proposals come forward. And of course, this commission will have the final approval of the request for proposals for both of those activities. Had a discussion with our contracted agency that will do the update for the Mason County Comprehensive Plan of the Economic Development Element. We had a regular meeting of the Thurston-Mason Behavioral Health Organization. And then all day of interviews of candidates for the Executive Director for the Lewis-Mason-Thurston Area Agency on Aging. And we'll be making recommendation to that board about who we should hire to replace Dennis Mahar, who was an icon in the field for sure. Over the weekend, I had the opportunity to cheer on my granddaughter and thankfully, to the Shelton Kiwanis for bringing once again the Missoula Children's Theater to Mason County. Very much encouraging North Mason entities to maybe consider sponsoring Missoula Children's Theater. It's a fabulous organization that comes in on a Monday, auditions hundreds of children, and in a very, very nice, soft manner, they end up doing the selections of the players. They have one week to then rehearse and perform those, the play on that Saturday. And it's a wonderful way to introduce people, children to the theatrical arts. And I'm just so thankful for the Shelton Kiwanis for bringing them here year after year. Turtles and the hare. And they did take a little bit of liberty with the Aesop's Fable, and they had a song that did say that they took liberty with Aesop's Fable. Let's see, so following today, we had our briefings yesterday following today's meeting. We do have the briefings with Squawson Tribe, Mason Transit Authority, and I'll be attending tonight the public meeting on the updated flood maps, FEMA flood maps. And we have about 3,000 properties that were added in and about 2,000 properties that were taken out of flood zones. And so it's very, very, very important people be aware, if you're anywhere near water, just to go online to the Mason County website, you can get a clickable link to identify whether your property was added in or taken out. And this is so important because if you're in and you haven't been there before, there is the need to purchase flood insurance. And there'll be technical assistance there to talk about what flood insurance covers and how to purchase that. And there'll be many, many tables of good expertise. So it'll be tonight at 6 o'clock at the North Mason Administration Building?
No, it's at the high school in the Commons.
In the Commons, in the Commons.
High School Commons? Okay, I thought it was in the administration building, too.
And I believe Mason Web TV will also be there to film. So if you can't make it, go to the website, but go watch Mason Web's TV's film on that. And then we'll have our briefing tomorrow on the Navy. And then I travel to Spokane for a Transportation Improvement Board meeting, and then go from there to Washington, D.C. to attend a National Workforce Development Conference. And so I will not be at Monday's, or Monday's briefings or Tuesday's regular meeting, evening meeting. And then, so then I guess I could just go on to... I have a Mason Transit Finance Committee meeting, Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Consortium of Governments meeting, and then back here for, and then I won't be back here the next day. Then I go to Seattle for a national conference on behavioral health. And I will be calling in, so I'll miss the Monday briefings on April 3, but I will be calling in my attendance at the Tuesday, the 4th, April 4 regular commission meeting.
Okay, short form, we had our briefings to discuss our revenue options and our cash flow. I attended a Housing Coalition meeting, I met with a few of the gentlemen that had some ideas on ways to treat septic for some of our more critical areas, some opportunities they think they have, and we need to look further into it, I think. I met with the representative of Derek Kilmer, Nick Carr, you guys all know him. We ended up talking, they asked what they could do, how they can help us, especially in North Mason. And we had a further discussion about, of course, our financing on the sewer system and the issues we have with trying to be able to find anybody that would refinance within that governmental entity. And he does know that, you know, there's, when anything is done, it can usually be about a point or a point and a half percent, and we need to extend it out to 40 years. So what he's agreed to do, I shouldn't say agreed, it was his idea, he's going to bring in and have a meeting with me, Derek, and whoever the regional person is for USDA and for EPA. And we'll have some discussions and see if they can create something if it doesn't already exist, or with a pen, if they could do it through the United States Legislature to help us. Anything like that would be incredible if we're able to pull it off. North Mason Chamber Commerce Board meeting, we had our EDC retreat, all-day event, was very well done. West Sound Alliance in protecting our transportation dollars. I met, I went to Maryland's event. During that time, of course, we talked about some of the partnerships we have with the bypass and the idea of getting that sewer up there through the Kitsap line. Collins Lake Homeowners Association, I met with North Mason School District Superintendent Dana, and we were able to get a few things finished up so we can get this on the agenda today and move that forward with a memorandum of understanding. Brought us back to our briefings after this meeting. We have our briefings with, as you heard, the Squawson Tribe and the Sheriff's Department, Mason Transit Authority. Madam Commissioner, if you're going to the FEMA meeting, if you guys don't mind, I'm going to bow out of that. I did have a schedule supposed to go. My son's team won their playoffs, and he actually is going to have a game. I'd really love to see him, so if you don't mind, if you are going.
You need to be there.
I was going to go, but if you were going to go, I'm going to, I'm going to bow out, so thank you for that, that's wonderful. Lakeland Village Homeowners Association, I'll be also meeting with the builders, just not sure on the time because we'll be doing a lunch. I'll be gone for a couple of days doing the risk pool, the county's risk pool. North Mason Chamber Luncheon brings us back to another briefing, then meeting with the Allen-Belfair Coalition. I'll be attending same time you are with the LSC webinar, the Legislative Steering Committee webinar, brings us back to more briefings. I'll attend the North Mason Community Voice meeting also, so we will both be in there. The library is having a special event where they have the Celtic Trio coming in there, so I'll be attending that with them. We have a Board of Health meeting, that brings us back to a regular commission.
Very good, thank you. Okay, item 12 is adjourned, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn.
I will second.
You are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Ron.